Meeting, special workshop of Beaufort County Council for US 278. And I would like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting was advertised in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, right, Ms. Brennan? And at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
A motion.
I have a second.
A second.
A second by Mr. Glover. Without objection, the agenda is approved. Without objection? No objection?
Yes.
All right, the agenda is approved. We do have some citizen comments. I'd like to remind those making citizen's comments to, we do have a limit of three minutes. Also, we do not respond back. And please make yourself, state where you're from and what the subject is. All right. Charles Perry, come forward. If you'll just state your name and your agenda topic says traffic light.
Thank you. Members of council, thank you for entertaining this workshop. Very much appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Charles Perry. I'm a chairman of the traffic committee at Windmill Harbor, which is, as you all know, is a community on the north end of the island. There is, I have attended either on, by television or otherwise, various workshops held by the town of Hilton Head. And in those workshops, there was mention of abolishing or modifying the stoplight that presently exists at Windmill Harbor. I stand before you today asking that that notion or that that movement be rejected. The Windmill Harbor stoplight has added tremendously to the safety of every man, woman, and child coming onto the island, because every man, woman, and child coming onto the island that don't fly or come by boat have to come through that intersection. And it has improved the safety of transit onto the island for everyone, whether it be a family of four from Ohio or contractor from Bluffton. And so, it is a good thing. It is a safe thing, and we worked hard for a lot of years, as you know, to make it a safer situation. It's a very efficient light. I was just telling the mayor, because I've worked so hard on this and I've worked 70 years, I look at traffic lights, and it is a very, very efficient stoplight. There's no delay really that's caused by people transiting through. It is a smart light, and it works very, very well. It has had other beneficial effects in that most of the people, and we clocked this, most of the people coming across, coming off of the bridge, doing between 60 and 70 miles an hour. And the speed limit is 50. And the light has had the effect, and the warning signs that accompany the light have had the effect of slowing people down to something approaching the speed limit. And that's a good thing for everyone, because it's just, it's almost impossible to stop when you're coming that fast, coming onto the island. So, we urge county council to reject any notion of doing away with the Windmill Harbor stoplight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. All right, next is Mike Garrigan. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, you did.
Okay. And the subject is Windmill Harbor traffic light. Thank you, Mr. Garrigan.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mike Garrigan, Windmill Harbor. Been a resident of Windmill Harbor for about 20 years. Prior to that, I lived for quite a number of years on the Fusky Island. Just wanted to come before this group and express to you our appreciation for the support of the council over the years. I've been before this council many times over the past, oh, I don't know, 10, maybe 12 years. I'm the past chairman of the traffic committee at Windmill Harbor. The light that is there today has been a godsend. I mean, believe me. It has been of enormous safety impact to the residents of Windmill Harbor and the guests, those in and out of Windmill Harbor, as well as the traffic on 278. Prior to the light, there were quite a few accidents, a number of accidents with fatalities over the years. We don't see that anymore. We're in a much better place in that regard. And I just want to thank this council and also Department of Transportation for the support in putting the light up, and hopefully, we will continue to have that light there for days to come and weeks to come and for years to come, because it has been of great assistance to everyone in that intersection, both coming into Windmill Harbor and leaving Windmill Harbor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrigan. Next is Ms. Felice. And it's general topic, all of it.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'll be more specific.
No, that's fine. It's public comment.
Felice Lamarcia, and I live in Seapines. I have lived there for 30 years. Next week will be 30 years. During those years, there have been many discussions at town hall regarding building a second way on and off the island. There have been many creative ideas brought up over all of those years. So, imagine my surprise in 2018, when the simple repair of the bridge is morphed into the building of this monolithic structure that is on the table. Everyone talks about safety and evacuations in these reports, but there's never a discussion in these reports about a second way off the island. Be it the north end of the island or the south end, no one seems to want a bridge in their neighborhood or near their neighborhood. Yet, it's okay to displace the stony neighborhood yet again. Someone here should say, "No more destruction to the stony neighborhood to protect the other PUDs." We also talk about aesthetics of the bridge. Soon as I get to the bridge, all I see are the aesthetics of the beautiful waterways as we're going over. That's what I'm looking at. I frequently now make the commute from Beaufort to Hilton Head several days a week. I am now one of the commuters on my way back to Seapines. If I hit mostly green lights, the drive takes me 45 to 50 minutes. When I hit mostly, or all, red lights, takes me one and a half hours. The only time I am stopped at or on the bridge to Hilton Head is if the Windmill Harbor light is red, and that's not for very long. The time it takes me two hours or more to get to the island there was an accident. I am one of the 12,000 citizens who do not want the $488 million plan. The study done for the town of Hilton Head stated that the time saved by the commuters would be approximately 15 minutes. Maybe I will feel differently when I am dying, but $488-plus million to save me 15 minutes is absurd. Unfortunately, you are here now to find a solution to a problem created by former county councils. In that light, and in all the work that Tom Davis has done for us, thank you, Tom, I would support his proposal if the third lane is a breakdown lane. That's what we need, and that none of it disturbs the stony neighborhood. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you.
Great comments. Ms. Ashley Phillips, 278 project.
Hi, Ashley Phillips, Indigo Run on Hilton Head. She said most of everything I wanted to say, so I won't repeat it, and I agree with everything that she said. I just want y'all to hopefully support the 12,000 people that signed a petition on the island that don't want a humongous bridge coming onto our little island. Understand that we need repairs. I know there's a section that's got to be replaced. I get that. No one's saying no to that, but I think it needs to be in scale with our island, and what's been proposed is not. Also, just want y'all to realize that the people that live on the island, we're the end, you know, we're the end users. You know, we suffer the most with that, I think. But thank you for everything that you're doing. I appreciate the new formats that you guys are doing, and thanks for being here today.
Thank you. Are there any, anybody late sign up for public comment? Ms. Brennan, we're good? All right. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our county administrator, Mr. Michael Moore, and then we'll go into the workshop. I wanted to point out, online, we have Senator Tom Davis, who will also be participating in the workshop. Thank you.
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Council. We do have Tom Davis, Senator Davis, online, so we'll turn it over very shortly to him. But just to kind of frame what our objectives are today, is to give you all the background, current status, and potential courses of action with regards to this 278 project, which, as we all know, with the failure of the referendum, left some funding shortfalls. In your package, Senator Davis's letter is included, and so when he, I'm going to turn it over to him to speak to that letter, so you have it there in front of you as he goes through it. But the main things we have in front of us are, we have a deadline of March 31st to negotiate an agreement with the CIB, and that is given to us by the State Infrastructure Bank, as well as South Carolina Department of Transportation, SCDOT, with regards to, they're going to have to make some decisions on what to do with the span, the eastbound span on the bridge by March 31st, due to loading factors and other engineering issues. So, with that, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Senator Davis to run through his proposal, and then we will come back and give you the background and status. So, with that, we'll turn it over to Senator Davis.
Thank you. Senator Davis? We can hear you. Sir, it's not coming through.
Here we go again. Looks like you're frozen.
It looks like you're frozen. We're going to check with our television people. Could you try and speak again, Senator?
I'm sorry, can y'all hear me right now?
Yes, sir.
Let me try.
Senator Davis, it's not syncing with your voice.
You know, if he would have just called in on one of our phones, we put it on speed, we might have a better chance of hearing him.
I have reported that to, given that I think it may affect for y'all.
Ms. Nichols, what would you recommend?
He's going to turn his camera off.
Okay. He's going to turn the camera off?
Turn off?
Turn your camera off, yes, sir. Is there a number he, okay, let's see now. Can we just hear his voice?
He's off.
He's off completely?
Let me just call him.
I think it.
Will that work a few else?
Ms. Nichols, which number?
Jared's calling him right now.
Okay.
Is that better?
No.
No, sir. Do you have a number you want him to call, Ms. Nichols? He can put them on the speaker.
Hey, I can just put you on speakerphone, and we'll get rid of the Zoom call. I'm going to put you in the, so it's the microphone.
All right, Jared, thank you.
All right, try that.
Is that a little bit better, Madam Chair?
We can hear you on Jared's phone.
Now try it.
Okay. All right, I'm going to do the best I can.
Thank you.
What I did about a month or so ago, along with my colleagues, Bill Hurd, Persman, Weston Newton, and Jeff Bradley, is to set forth what I thought the most practical use of the existing funds on hand would be. And I'm making one assumption, Madam Chair, in making this proposal, is that there is no way for us, when I mean us, I mean local governments, to come up with a portion of the overrun, a portion of the approximately $170 million overrun. Roughly half of it was the path from the DOT. And my assumption is that there is not, it is not feasible for a local government to come up with another $90 million at this time. And so, given that, I think the most practical way to proceed is looking at the money we have on hand. And I'm just going to speak in very round terms. I don't have, you know, the letter in front of me. But speaking in round terms, we have approximately $300 million suspended. You know, about 120 million of it coming from the CIB, about 90 million coming from local governments, the majority of that being the penny sales tax of 2018, and then the balance coming from the DOT, which has committed additional funds above and beyond what it has allocated for the replacement of the first span across the Mackey Creek. So, you got about $300 million. And so, I asked Secretary Powell for various cost estimates on various increments of the project, so that I could assess what I thought might be a reasonable path forward. And this is what I concluded, and along with my colleagues, is that it would cost approximately $250 million to build a new three-lane eastbound span commencing at Moss Creek, continuing to the south of it in parallel to the existing three-lane span, crossing Pigney Island, and then continuing on to where Windmill Harbor is. That particular new three-lane eastbound span would cost approximately $250 million to build. The existing span, eastbound span, which is two-lane, would remain in existence in conjunction of the new eastbound three-lane span, so there would not be any interruption of traffic onto or off the island during the of traffic onto Roffin Island during the construction period. And then after that new three-lane eastbound span was completed from Moss Creek all the way to Windmill Harbor, you would take down and dismantle the existing two-lane eastbound span. That would have the advantage of repairing what is in immediate need to repair, which is the, the, the first part of the existing eastbound span from Windmill Harbor to Pinkney Island. I mean, that is the span that the DOD has said, if it has to, and if we can't work out, you know, some sort of a larger project, that they are going to go in and just repair that eastbound span from Windmill Harbor to Pinkney Island, which will be approximately, I think, $90 million. And then the additional money that the DOD has, has said that would be, will spend on this project would no longer be there, and the $120 million grant from the State Infrastructure Bank would no longer be there. I consider that to be the suboptimal outcome. I, I want to utilize the existing CIB grants. I want to take the DOD up on this offer to put additional funds for this project. And so, I, I think building a new three-lane eastbound span in the way that I articulated would be reasonable, be existing NEPA footprint, so there would not have to be, you know, less be delays in modifying the applications to the Federal Highway Administration. And it would involve having to negotiate a new intergovernmental agreement with the CIB, because the $120 million from the CIB right now is predicated upon that money being applied to the entire bridge project, being both new eastbound and westbound spans, so we'd have to amend that IGA. I, I feel, I feel like we have a very good chance of getting that done. If 250 million of the $300 million on hand is spent in that regard, Madam Chair, that would leave approximately $50 million left to do something, what I refer to as the on-island component of this, from Windmill Harbor extending to Cross Island Parkway. Not, not terminating prior to Cross Island Parkway, but continuing to Cross Island Parkway, because I, I think that, that's an appropriate scope for that master plan, to, to look at, you know, what are the options in regard to having a free flow of traffic coming off the eastbound span, going to the southern part of the island via Cross Island Parkway, maybe potentially alleviating or foregoing, having to stop at, at stoplights, the examination of other ways to maybe increase the free flow of traffic. You can also focus then on implementing the Stony neighborhood mitigation aspects that the Town of Hilton Head already has been working so well. I don't know if everything that is contemplated on the on-island piece could be done for $50 million, but so that, that, it depends on what that ends up looking like. I mean, I, I understand that the Town of Hilton has held some workshops on that, and maybe developing some ideas on what the on-island piece looks like, and then once that's done, you could then do a cost estimate on it to see whether or not the $50 million is going to be satisfactory to come to this cost. And of course, if it isn't, then we'd have to figure out, you know, how to pay for any overage. But it, it seems to me that those things, a new three-lane eastbound span from Moss Creek all the way to Windmill Harbor, and doing the on-island piece for the bounds of this arts, I, I think that accomplishes some important objectives. I think it, it does address, you know, sort of, we backed into addressing the concerns that I've heard from a lot of my constituents about a, a very large, monolithic eastbound, westbound span being done together, because under this scenario that I just articulated, you would continue to have separated spans. You would have the new separated, the new eastbound span, and you would have the existing two-lane westbound span separated, so you would not have them together. So, those were my thoughts and the thoughts of my delegation colleagues in regard to what a prudent expenditure of the $300 million would be. Obviously, the ultimate decision will be made by Beaufort County and the Town of Hilton Head, and, you know, I stand ready, as I always have, whatever outcome the local governments reach in this matter, I'll work with my delegation colleagues to ensure and try to make that happen, working with the DOD, working with the CIB, you know, working with the Federal Highway Administration. But, but those are my overall thoughts, Madam Chair. I, I thought it's sufficiently important to, to try to put it all down in writing, so that you, you have something in front of you. But, but, but that is my overview of that letter, and I'm happy to answer any questions, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Senator. I'd like to open it up for questions. Anyone? No questions? Some of this is new to some of the people here, and some of us, we've heard it before. Nobody-
Madam Chair, can I ask that, is, is the letter that I wrote on behalf of myself and my colleagues, is that in your packet? Do you have that letter?
It is, and we have, we have it up on our screen.
Okay, good, good.
Any county council members have some questions? No?
I will say this, Madam Chair, I, I am meeting tomorrow afternoon with Secretary Powell. It's my understanding that some representatives from the Town of Hilton Head are coming up to try to get some further information from him, so that the town council can assess their options. I intend to be at that meeting and to offer any assistance that I can offer.
Yes, sir.
But, but it, it sounds to me as though some due diligence is being put in, some workshops are being held, some public input is being solicited, and so it, it sounds to me like the Town of Hilton Head at least is working within sort of those, what can we do with the money we have parameters that I've outlined.
They, they've had two workshops that I know of the last two weeks. Councilman Glover has a question?
This, is the Town of Hilton Head, are you telling me that the Town of Hilton Head endorses this concept?
I can't, I can't say that, Mr. Glover. I, I can tell you that the questions they've been asking me and the information that they've requested, it suggests to me that they're looking at the framework that I proposed. In other words, instead of trying to come up with additional funds to complete the entire $490 million project, I think they've accepted the fact that, no, that's not going to happen. We now need to look at what can we best do with $300 million we have on hand. I, I don't know if there's a consensus on town council as to using that money in the way that I and my colleagues have suggested. I, I don't know that yet, but the questions that they're asking me and the information they're requesting, it leads me to believe that they are now working within this $300 million context, and like, what can they do with the money we have? And, you know, this would, of course, if this is followed, it would leave the two-lane westbound spans in place, and, you know, which is okay, because those families, they are not structurally efficient, they are not posing any public safety risks. I mean, those, those westbound spans are in good condition, so there'd be time to further formulate what do you want to do with those westbound spans in the future. And you could address that as a separate project, you could discuss, you know, financing for it as a separate matter, you could talk about what you want that to look like. And I, I will say that, that on the eastbound span that, that I proposed, and the $250 million estimate that's going to apply to it, that consists of three lanes, 12 feet in width each of the three lanes, with shoulders on each side, 10 feet in width, but does not include, does not include the bicycle and pedestrian lanes, which would add, you know, $40 million to the project and take it from 250 to 290. So, it, it couldn't be that at some point in the future, as a separate project, if you wanted to do something with the westbound spans, perhaps you could incorporate more the kind of bicycle and pedestrian access that was initially contemplated for this project. And, and I'll just throw this out, because it's been something, and again, this is down the road, but at that point in time, if we're doing something separate on the westbound span as, as a separate project, not only could you consider doing pedestrian bicycle lanes there, but you could even also look at perhaps having those transmission lines that are currently above ground, and in my opinion, a very incisively impediment to, you know, the first view and impression on Hilton Head, you could have those as somehow a part of that westbound span project, to kind of have those transmission lines built into that. So, I, I, again, that's, that's not before y'all now, but, but it is something that can be taken up in the future as a separate project, if, if the approach that I've suggested is, is what we choose to do there.
Any other questions for Senator Davis? Senator Davis, we know you're busy. Do you want to stay on while we continue with the workshop, or?
I, I would love to stay on, Madam Chair, but I have to get back in on the floor. We're, we're debating an education choice bill, so I need, I need to get back for that.
Okay.
But I am going to be at the meeting tomorrow with Secretary Powell, and I will, of course, communicate whatever information I obtain to Mr. Moore, and then Mr. Moore can share it with, with council members, and of course, I'll make myself available if you think I can answer perfect questions.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, and we're going to go on with our workshop.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Mr. Moore wants to say something before you go off.
Senator Davis, we are planning to be there as well, Jared and myself.
Oh, good. Okay, good. I'll see you tomorrow then.
See you then.
Okay, guys, thanks.
Thank you very much. All right. Are you ready, Ms. Moore, to continue on with the workshop? And Councilman Glover, we do have mayor, we have two people from Hilton Head Council here in the audience today, too, so, two, I think, right? Two, yeah. So, we'll continue on.
Okay, so I'm going to turn this over to Jared to cover the, the details, but as I said from the outset, we have, we have in front of us is a deadline of March 31st to make, you reach an agreement with the, with the CIB, as well as meet the SCDOT deadline. We have the IGA, intergovernmental agreement with the CIB, there's an agreement with DOT, and agreement, a memorandum of agreement with the town that would all have to be considered as part of this. These are really the actions for council to consider. And with that, what I would like to do is, in your package, you've got a project, background of project history memorandum. What we're going to do is, is I'm going to have Jared walk us through that, and then we'll get into some of the other discussion after that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Jared, tell us when we can ask questions. We'll, we'll wait till-
You can ask questions however you'd like. If you want to ask along the way, that's, it's fine, however you'd like to do that. As Mike mentioned, the, I want to, I've been to several town council meetings, and their council is very well-versed, and I want to make sure our council is completely up to speed with the history of the project background, and then more, most importantly, share kind of the recent developments that happened over the last six months or so. And this, a lot of this information was shared at the January 9th meeting that the town council had. They had a very, very organized format, so we're, we're still in some of your format, so thank you for that. But first, want to kind of go through the project history, and we have it as the agenda backup material, we've shared it on the screen, and then also have printed in front of each of you a hard copy of basically this three or four-page memo that staff has repaired. And then there's three documents, attachment 14, 15, and 16, which we'll get to towards the end, but those are the most current documents from the CIB, DOT, and the letter that Senator Davis just referenced. So, starting with, and I brought, yeah, starting on page two, if you can go back to the front, page two in the agenda packet. So, this is the history, and again, I'm not going to go in all these details, but I wanted to talk through the, the outline, and then also where the different agreements showed up and how they came to be. So, the project, for all intents and purposes, started there in 2017 with our first agreement with DOT. So, this agreement was in April, and all this agreement was is a financial participation agreement. So, it's referenced as attachment one, and at the time, the plan was for there to be $3 million split between the county, the DOT, and LATS, to prepare the environmental document and initial engineering, so essentially the 30% design. We went through that, and then there's also two additional attachments that kind of go beyond, and I'll reference those later, but, so there was the initial financial participation, then we upped that later for extended time period and costs, and then later for the overall design and construction management with DOT. So, we kicked off with DOT, then we started working together, and ahead of the 2018 sales tax in November, we hosted the first public information meeting. There have been three, two public information meetings, a public hearing, and then a third public information that was the modification of the public hearing. So, that happened in 2018. In 2019 is when we made our first application to the CIB. So, that agreement is, was later approved, and, and we'll see that in just a little bit, later approved, and then is basically the basis of what later became the CIB-IGA agreement that we hear and talk about. It's a really long agreement, you don't really know, need to know all the grant application, but essentially that is referenced in the IGA, and that information is in there. So, the agenda packet is pretty thorough, I don't expect everybody to read it, but I want to make sure that everyone had all these agreements that we keep referencing, including the public, so they know exactly what we're talking about. So, fast forward to September 2019, 19th, 2019, this was the second hearing, so at this point, this is when we're talking about the range of alternatives. So, initially, we had some information, what do you want to see? And then we had the spaghetti model that had 19 different alternatives, and really cost wasn't even evaluated at this point. We were looking at high-range alternatives, different options and impacts, whether that was environmental or social, or, or different right-of-way acquisitions required. So, that, that was hosted in September, and then the following summer is when they didn't take up the grants right there. We submitted it in 2019, but they didn't actually take action until the following year. So, in July of, July 16th, 2020, the CIB met, and they awarded the grant for the US 278 corridor project. At the time, I believe there was either seven or nine grants awarded at the time, and this project was ranked, the highest-ranked project of all the submitted projects. So, that's when we received $120 million from the CIB. And the interesting thing at this time is, we had a proposed project cost estimate, but we didn't have a proposed alternative yet. So, we're going through the public hearing process and the NEPA process, and at the time, we had a range of alternatives. At this time, we had narrowed it down from 19 alternatives to six alternatives, and we had a range of a cost of project from $200 million to $400 million. But the estimated cost at the time of the CIB application was approximately $270 million, and we were asking CIB for $120 million. So, they, again, we, we got that grant award, but we didn't finalize that and codify that in agreement till the following year. But in the meantime, we started working with the town a little bit closer beyond the public meetings, and there was a call for an independent review to be established. So, before we hosted the final public meeting, or the public hearing, to reveal the preferred alternative, we had an independent review. This was led by the county, and this was conducted by our consultant, HDR. It took a few months there at the beginning of, or the end of 2020, and in the beginning of March 20, or April 2021. And then with the results of that, basically kind of said that the information that's been provided thus far does seem to be appropriate, and the alternatives that DOT is looking at are reasonable. So, shortly thereafter is when DOT hosted the public hearing, where the preferred alternative was provided, and in that scenario, it was the one bridge of six lanes, and to the south, in the location that we've referenced, to the south of the existing bridges. It would be demoing the four current bridges and replacing it with one single span with six lanes and a multi-use pathway on the south side of that. Following the public hearing, there was a period of public comments, that the county and DOT received public comments, and during that time, the town had worked with the consultant, MKSK, to assist them in providing town comments to the project. So, in November 15th, they, they had those prepared and presented those to the project, to DOT to consider and the county to consider. Shortly thereafter, like I said, there was some gaps in the interac- Shortly thereafter, like I said, there was some gaps in the interactions with the CIB. We were able to finalize and execute the CIB, and that agreement is referenced as Attachment 5. In the CIB, there's a couple of highlights, and it itself is several pages long. And we can talk to any of these agreements as much as you like. But there's a couple of key highlights. One, it referenced the grant proposal. So, the grant proposal is in such, that it's incorporated into the IGA. And then secondly, there was a couple of things that were very particular. One, that $120 million was all that the CIB was going to put to the project, and any overruns would be the responsibility of the county. That is stated clearly. Secondly, it said that the project, it had some milestones as far as schedule, that the project, there was two milestones, an interim milestone and then a final milestone. The interim milestone is that the project would be under construction in January 1st, 2024, and then it would be completed by the end of 2028. And those are important dates because that gets us to our discussion about having to amend our agreement with IGA, with CIB. So, moving forward, we then took the information provided from the town and, and the other public comments, and looked at that and see if there was opportunity to refine the existing preferred alternative. And there was some adjustments that were made. There was some good feedback that was incorporated. And this was revealed to the public back as a public information, so a third public information meeting in March 3rd, 2022. And this version of the project was then called the Modified Preferred Alternative. So, in that, you can see things, there was a bend on Jenkins Island that the town, MKSK, had presented and requested, and a couple of other comments as far as the geometry of the project.
And it's, I'm sorry to interrupt, at this point, the NEPA documentation was okay?
Yeah, so, so the NEPA document started when the project started.
Right.
And so, the whole process, we've been building up Public Hearing, or Public Information Meeting 1, 2, Preferred Alternative, that, that's the process. And typically, that process has a three-year plan. So, when we initially had our first financial participation with DOT, it took us through the Fonzie, through the NEPA process, and the, the basic stamp of approval from Federal Highway, which is usually around the three-year mark. So, we were right on mark when we had the Preferred Alternative in July of 2021. And then, but because we started continuing to look into the project is, is why we had to do the Financial Participation Supplemental Number 2 with, with Supplemental Number 1 with DOT, which basically gave more time and money to that NEPA process. And then there was, we had already had one independent review, and then there was a call in connection with the town for a second independent review. Yes, ma'am?
Another question. For the public?
Yes.
That may watch us later.
Absolutely.
You dropped a lot of acronyms again.
I'm really trying not to.
I know, but just so they know what you're talking about.
Let me know.
NEPA.
All right, NEPA is the National Environmental Protection Act. So, that is environmental law that says if you have a federalized project, you have to go through and coordinate with all the federal and state agencies to make sure that their comments and feedback are incorporated into your project, as well as public comment. So, when we had the public information meetings, these are in concert with that law called NEPA.
Might as well drop Fonzie.
Fonzie is essentially the conclusion of the NEPA process. And what that says is finding of no significant impact. It doesn't mean that, that there are not impacts to the project, and it doesn't mean that the impacts that they are aren't significant. It's, their measure is significant in terms of the project available to move forward. So, we all know that the project cuts through the Stony community, and any impacts in that area are significant. Those two terminologies, significant locally versus significant to Federal Highway, are, are, they have different meanings in them, from Federal Highway's perspective.
Thank you.
And then, while I'm on that point, so, the project, there's three levels of NEPA documents that you can do on a federal project. We are in basically the second one. So, there's a categorical exclusion, which is step one. And that's really if it's straightforward and there's not any impacts or any to speak of. Step two, if there are impacts, there's called environmental assessment, AEA is what you'll hear it called, and that is what we're doing. And then if there's either known assessments or through this process of environmental assessment, if you, if you uncover assessments that need to be explored further, then you go into environmental impact study. So, we're in the Phase 2, and then the conclusion of that would be the Fonzie. Yes, thank you for helping me with my nomenclature.
You'd be sad if I didn't.
No, absolutely, absolutely. And I really, really try to work on my vernacular. All right, so, so we're at March 22. We had the third public information meeting. And then later in that year is when I referenced the coordination with Hilton Head, and we established the MOA, the first MOA with the town, which called for an additional independent review. It also called that we were essentially going to work together. We hadn't, we had been working together, but not in a formal condition. So, this helped us bring us together closer, and then also agreed, like I said, to work on this independent review. So, this independent review was a joint effort, and it was spelled out in the MOA how we were going to do that and how we're going to procure that. The county procured it, but the town was involved in the selection committee, and that was done by a consultant by the name of CBB. So, their work took about six months or so. So, they started in March 2023, and then were able to complete their work in the September timeframe of that year. And then towards the end of that, there was a decision for the town to lead a third and separate independent review outside of the county. And as you're aware, there's been a citizen, a group of citizens that have been heavily involved, and the town coordinated with, with the citizens, interested citizens to participate in that, that independent review. And that was procured by the town and performed by Lockmueller Group. And essentially, was another six months, so from December 23 to June 24. Which, that brings us to current history. So, that's past history, and now we're getting to current history. And Ms. Howard, if I need to pause there, you let me know. I know I've covered a lot of ground. That was only seven and a half years.
Okay. Any questions about the, the past history? Councilman Glover, you, no? Okay, we're good.
All right.
Great history.
Okay, so now, what's happened since then? And this is really a lot of copy and paste from the town, but I went back a little bit further from the town. So, they started at municipal consent, which I'll get to in just a second. But a little bit before municipal consent was, we had a discussion with the CIB in the end of May. And the reason is, up until February of 2024, we have been moving forward. We don't update the cost estimate monthly. It's something that we do systematically throughout the life of the project or if there's any substantial change. So, up until February of 2024, we really hadn't updated the project in two and a half years or so. And of course, what also happened in that two and a half years, and the seven years, has been COVID. And specifically, after COVID, was some hyperinflation that we all experienced, not just locally, but worldwide, nationally and worldwide. So, there was a call for an update to the cost estimate. And as expected, there was an increase in costs substantially. So, the cost estimate ahead of time was approximately $330 million. And at this time, we already had the $300 million. We had the, the county funds, the DOT funds, and we'd already been granted the $120 million CIB funds. And in the agreement with CIB, it was a reminder, one, that we would start construction by January 1st, 2024, and that we would be the burden for all the overruns. So, they reached out to us after DOT performed a cost estimate in February. On our quarterly reports, we send a quarterly report. So, after each quarter ends the following month, we send that report by the 15th. So, our April 15th report reflected that updated cost estimate, and they said, hey, we need to talk. You are beyond your time commitment. It's getting started on January 1st, and you need to tell us what you're going to do, how you're going to come up with a shortfall. So, the new cost estimate, as you've heard, has been updated to $488 million. And our current end fund is $298 million, so $190 million shortfall. So, we took a visit to DOT, and in that, you can see below the attendees, but it was representatives from the CIB, from DOT, and from Beaufort County, and from our legislative delegation. And we went up there, and we talked through the life of the project, where we are and where we think the project is going. Their two concerns as far as the project was, where do we stand with municipal consent with the town? As well as, what are you going to do for the shortfall? And we explained to them that, that the town was working through the independent review of their own, and that they were working to take that up on their own accord. And then secondly, we talked about our upcoming referendum that County Council was already working on for a transportation sales tax in November. And in that, we explained in discussion there that we didn't feel, that County Council didn't feel, and County staff didn't feel that if we showed the full $190 million on the new transportation sales tax, that that would be too large of a ask for the citizens to support the upcoming sales tax. And so, the decision and discussion through County Council was to reflect $90 million of that. And then we made an ask for a match of $90 million from the CIB and $10 million from DOT to help us shore up that shortfall. Now, they didn't tell us no, but they also didn't tell us yes. So, we just kind of sat there for a little while. And then following that meeting is our next item there, number two. If you go up on, I'm on page four. Yep. There you go, sorry. So, so they sent, in June, they sent a letter to county and said, okay, give us an update. We appreciate meeting with you in May. Tell us an update on municipal consent and the shortfall. So, we didn't have much to tell them at the specific time. We were still going through the last reading of our ordinance for sales tax. And then the town was working through several public meetings and eventual municipal consent. So, number three item is the municipal consent and memorandum of agreement. So, the town approved that on June 28th. That was an agreement that we had already had established a MOA on the project. This was a second MOA, how we were going to continue working together on the project. And the town had conditions in there that they were working through, and that was part of their consent. They ended up, during the course of the meeting, there was much discussion with DOT and lawyers on how that could be presented. And so, there are actually separate documents. The consent is with DOT, and the MOA is with the town, or with the county. And that was how it was approved at the town level. So, following that, three days after Mike started, we were able to respond back with some positive updates on the project to the CIB, to their June 14th letter. And we sent back a letter that stated that the town did take up municipal consent and moved that forward, and that County Council approved a transportation referendum to go on the ballot in November that included the $90 million. So, again, they didn't say yes to the proposal, and they didn't tell us no. They just kind of sat to watch what was happening unfold. So, moving, moving further down to item number five, the county responded to the municipal consent on November. And the response was provided back in two agreements. So, they had sent over an agreement. There was a lot of different items that they had listed. And the county's response was to separate the agreement into a bridge-related or a project road-related agreement, and then a community-related agreement. So, that was what was sent back to them, basically bifurcating what they had proposed. A lot of the language was copy and paste. There was comments, a few comments that were made on specific items. But that was what was sent back to the town. Not included, I didn't include this on the list, but in there was November, I believe it was 5th, was the transportation sales tax valid date. And as we all are aware, it failed, which then the CIB letter came on November 7th. So, it failed on Tuesday, and we got a letter on Thursday. And they said, hey, we watched your, your sales tax, and it failed. Now, tell us, you, you've got 15 days to give us a response on how you're going to shore up the $190 million. So, and these items, again, I have them listed as attachments. They're all in the backup, and we can go through as many of those as you like. But we definitely don't have to go through the details of each of those. But they're in there for yours and the public's information. So, moving on to November 18th. So, we went back to the CIB, to, they had, they hosted a meeting in Columbia. And myself and Senator Davis attended that meeting. And Senator Davis, on behalf of the county, hold on, I'm sorry. I skipped a line. I'm on number eight. Number seven, excuse me. Just ahead of that meeting with the CIB, the DOT also sent a letter to the county. And this letter stated that we know your sales tax failed, but we have to make a decision on how to move forward with the eastbound lane of the Maca Curic. So, they explained what they've looked at so far, that originally, they were thinking that the replacement or the rehab would, would cost about $50 million and only allow 10 years of life. And that the new cost of the project to replace it was approximately $90 million. So, their preference was to, if they had to, was to do that repair, a replacement versus a rehab. But they would offer a, an extension till March 31st, that the county come up with a plan, or otherwise, the DOT would make the decision to move forward to, to replace that single span. So, two days later, we attended the meeting on November 18th. And that's where Senator Davis represented the county. And with the letter in hand from just Secretary Justin Powell from DOT, providing a March 31st deadline, he requested that the CIB also give us an extension beyond the 15 days to come up with a viable plan and funding alternative locally that we could present back to the CIB and to DOT in the same date as March 31st, 2025. So, they, they listened to all the different projects that were represented across the state and made decisions on each of those projects. They did approve that request that was made by Senator Davis in Beaufort County. And so, essentially, we're giving a four-month grace period to come up with a plan versus the two weeks that they mentioned. So, later, there was a meeting that was held locally between county and town officials on December 6th. This was just a local meeting with Senator Davis and Beaufort County and Town of Hilton Head representatives. And the point of this meeting was to talk about the, the actions that had just been taken at the CIB meeting and the letter from CIB, and to identify potential funding sources and determine what next steps, how, how this needs to come through councils, workshops. How do we come up with this funding plan? What does that look like? So, that was the purpose of that December 6th meeting. And, and was just a pre-plan, how do we get together and come up with a collective plan together? After that, we, staff both from Beaufort County and Hilton Head, along with Senator Davis, met with staff of DOT in Columbia on December 19th. And at that meeting, we discussed opportunities and option. We were kind of spitballing ideas at this point. What could we do? What couldn't we do? Just all hands on deck were in there trying to contemplate ways that we could develop the project or move the project. We didn't come away with any fast. We didn't come away with any fast actions and this is exactly the path forward, but it was a good discussion. And out of that, one of the discussion points was to help both staff bring this back to both town and county councils, was to help us with some cost components. So if there's got to be cost decision made by councils, well, what are those cost elements? And is there a way for us to get them on a segment by segment basis? And what we're talking about is what's the bridge cost itself? What's the components of the bridge, i.e. the, the multi-use path? If we didn't have that. So basically a à la carte buffet that we could come back in a, in a discussion format much like today and take up, if we could put together a plan, that would be something that we could turn back to the CIB and to DOT. So then continuing to move forward on item number 12, Hilton Head hosted, excuse me, number 11. On January 9th, Hilton Head was planning to host a workshop on 278. And just hours before that, I believe Senator Davis had finalized the letter and the proposal that he went over at the beginning of this meeting and provided that to both the town and the county. And was appointed discussion that later took place that afternoon at the town's workshop. But Senator Davis's plan, as he described, essentially was to build with what you have. So we had a $500 million project. He suggested build a $300 million project. And with the information that DOT was already working on, he talked with Secretary Powell and, and got some information from the engineering department on some of those cost components, preliminary information still, but suggested that there's an opportunity to build the three lane span, retain the two westbound lanes. And then you at least have five lanes of capacity greater than the four that you have. And you can continue with the two east, westbound lanes for a period of time, whether that's a future project or that is just the end of the project. So that was the proposal that, that was outlined in the letter and he talked about thereafter. And then item number 12 is the actual meeting. So at that meeting, the town manager, Mark Orlando, and project manager Sean Colan kind of took their counsel through a similar history and current history as I'm doing here today on where the project, what's essentially happened since they last met and talked about it at their June 28th meeting for municipal consent. And it was a very productive meeting. They, they had good conversation. Senator's Davis letter was well received by the town council. And again, there wasn't any decision that they support or don't support. It just, that makes sense trying to build what you have with the means that you do have. Since then, our scheduled meeting, we had a meeting scheduled with DOT planned for the 21st of this month. That was postponed, that was last week. It was postponed due to weather. And the goal of that meeting was for us to get that cost component information that Senator Davis, that we talked about in December and that Senator Davis referenced the preliminary information in his letter for us to also answer some, we had some questions now that were, came up at town council meeting that we were able to hopefully bring those to that meeting. Since that meeting did not happen, it got rescheduled and is taking place tomorrow. So tomorrow, there will be county staff and town staff, along with Senator Davis and DOT to have that meeting, to talk through those issues. And I believe we'll be able to take that information and then come back and have additional meetings, whether it's in this format or not, to talk about those decisions, or not decisions, but those components that are discussed for county council and town council to take decisions. And then our meeting was also scheduled on January 21st, but was delayed to weather. So it actually works out good for us in the fact that rather than going to talk to DOT without having feedback from county council, we've heard from town council, especially with the recent letter and proposal from Senator Davis, this buys us an opportunity now to hear what is the reactions from county council. And then we can take both town council comments and county council comments up to Columbia tomorrow to talk through with DOT and to hear some of their cost components to help us formulate a plan that we can thus come back to both councils and hopefully codify some path forward that we can then, as Mike referenced at the beginning of the meeting, start negotiating updated CIB agreement and then corresponding DOT agreements. And then lastly, we would need to coordinate what that MOA would look like with the town. So I know I've covered a lot of ground and there's a lot of documentation there, but I wanted to make sure everybody had every single document. To recap, there's three important documents. It's the CIB IGA, the DOT financial participation agreement, and then lastly, the MOA with the town that will need to be considered. And, and Mike can come in and hit cleanup. But essentially what from staff to hear from county council so that we know what is important and can represent those when we go up to Columbia and then also bring information back to you guys.
Very thorough explanation and thank you very much. Does anyone have some questions about the history, the more recent history of, to ask Jared? Yes, Tom?
Couple of quick questions, but I've had the opportunity to sit at the town council meetings and hear your counterpart, Sean, who's sitting here, do a recap. My question to you is, how did Jared do? I think he did a quite a good job.
We're tag teams.
Yeah, I like that.
Sean does a great job at his meetings.
Unbelievable. Good. Back to the, I think, is it appropriate to go back to the senators' thoughts real quick? Or do you want to stay with history? How do you want to do that? I have a couple of.
Well, let's.
Well, maybe.
Questions for Jared specific.
I think, I think you can answer these for the people watching that will watch later. With the March 31st deadline, how much life do we have left on the current Mackey eastbound span? And two, how long will it take to design the three lanes, new ones, if that's the approach we take? And how long will it take to get shovel to ground? Roughly.
The first question, how long do we have on, we're out of time. We don't have any more time on the eastbound lanes. So they have to be addressed.
For the life and the, the safety, et cetera?
Correct. That's right.
Okay.
So question two and three, how long would it take to design and, and get shovels in the ground? So DOT's letter, and I mentioned this just the other day at town's workshop, we all sit on different perspectives and have a different approach to the project. That's just nature of where we have each agency represent us. DOT has to maintain that corridor. And in order to maintain it, they have, that's, the March 31st exists to us because they intend to have a project under construction in 2027. And so if, if we can present a viable plan and option, they would love to, to do a larger project. If we cannot provide that, they will make a decision and carry out the replacement of the single span on the eastbound Mackey Creek Bridge.
I think that's good. Thank you.
Just to add, if I could, I've got it right in front of me. The eastbound bridge was built in 1956 and is reaching the end of its design life. It's all in the second paragraph and it's currently rated as a four out of 10 condition. So now they have to inspect it annually instead of biannually. But they don't give a specific life.
No, this is, this is very important. It's good.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jared before we turn it back over to the chair, to Mike Moore?
Thank you.
Our other councilman from Hilton Head, any questions?
No, I'm good.
You've been involved in this from the very beginning.
Yeah, I know.
And, and our, and Councilman Passamit too, has been involved from the very beginning. Okay, we want to turn it back over to Mike Moore, if he can have a little bit of a breather, Jared, or?
Yeah, I mean, however we need it.
So, you know, I, I don't know if there's discussion you all want to have amongst yourselves in terms of, I think really where we're at is, is the concept that, you know, Senator Davis outlined, is that something, you know, generally, you know, we have questions, maybe get into that more specifically in terms of a way ahead.
Do we want to put that cost, the?
We can put the letter back up.
The letter back up with?
Absolutely.
I, I do have a question on that specifically. Is, Mr. Mayor, are you willing to talk about how town feels about the senator's proposal? Is that appropriate right now to hear that? I mean, we've referenced that a few times.
I'll leave that up to the chairman.
Let's look at the numbers first before we, and then we'd like to hear from you.
Please.
So, and one thing that was not mentioned is that part of this funding includes the 2018 referendum. There was 80 million as part of that. So that's another aspect of this, is that funding has been allocated from the 2018 referendum. There's going to be the additional funding from the 2024 referendum and that did not pass. And part of that, that 80 million, correct me if I'm wrong, goes towards the match with the CIB.
Yeah, it was all encompassed in the agreement language.
So the voters have already voted in terms of the referendum on the 80 million towards this project. And so that's, you know, part of this is, and when we discussed this, if you recall back in November after we got the letter, at that time, council's direction was, you know, no additional funding, other than what had already been committed. So I think that's part of what led Senator Davis to where we are today, is, is that we're going to make use of the funds we have. The, the thing to consider is even with the project cost under the current IGA with the CIB, the local government, i.e. the county, is responsible for overages. So that's something we would need to consider carefully going forward when we go to renegotiate with the CIB. But I think the questions for the CIB are going to be, you know, given the amount of funding we've already put forth and the fact this, and I think Senator Davis alluded to this, and now we're only going to repair the eastbound lanes instead of the entire bridge, or is the CIB commitment going to remain the same? I think that's a question we're going to have to.
That's a question.
That's a question we're going to have to hear from them.
If they're still committed to the 120?
Correct. Even though the project itself is only going to be, it's been de-scoped essentially. And I think Senator Davis recognized that as part of the questions we'll need to ask. The other part of this is, you know, DOT, we'll have the discussion with them tomorrow. You know, what does DOT see? I mean, it's, it's DOT, it's a state bridge and they're going to have, as well as federal highway. So, I mean, there's others that are going to have to weigh in on this project. So it's a very challenging timeline to get everything lined up by the 31st. But hopefully we can get some sort of a framework and then go forward with the agreements. So with that.
Any other, any questions? Any?
So our operating is that council's committed already to where we are, to the current funding levels, and, and we're working to see what we can accomplish within the funding.
Within that funding that we were just shown?
Yeah, my question was, will the CIB still give us the 120 million?
That's a question we have as well. And we don't know the answer to that until we sit down with them.
Until you find out.
But we do want to partner with DOT so that there's alignment, because we have the agreement with DOT as well. So they need to be a big part of this conversation.
I'm looking, no other questions?
That's good.
Okay, Mayor Perry, we'd like to hear from you.
Yeah, so for the record, Alan Perry, Mayor of Hilton Head Island. We haven't taken any votes or any action. We've had, we've had workshops to understand where the community stands, what they would like to see, what they would not like to see, what individual council members would like to see or what they would not like to see. We have the same questions. Where is the money? $120 million? We, we feel, I feel, I should say, I feel, that that is probably going to be reduced. So how can we start talking about what is the, what are the elements? What are the components that is going to make this bridge? It's going to be less than $300 million. But we're facing a crisis of having that bridge load posted. You know, we, we look at Helene, we look at what happened to the, to Interstate 40 up in North Carolina and Tennessee. If we had a storm that had big winds, it would not, could knock that bridge out. So we've got to have the things figured out well by March 31st. It is our economics, you know, livelihood. It is our stability. It is our safety. It's getting kids to school. It's getting emergency vehicles across the bridge. You know, starting in '27 and then finishing down the road, that's too long. But council is committed to have the conversations publicly as to where each one of us stand individually, listen to our constituents to make certain that we're representing them correctly and properly, which I think we're all trying to do. This has gone on for a long time. And we're from 2017 to 2025. It has caused a lot of discussion and a lot of diversity. And we need to realize that we need to make decisions based off of the data and the facts that we have. And the first and foremost is the dollars. And then it comes to if there's not enough money to do what's needed to be done, then how is it paid for? So we're being asked to address situation and come up with options. And we don't even have the parameters as to how we can do that. I personally want to see what the council, county council wants to do. I want to know where y'all stand, because that is going to be a huge driver as to what the town does. So I'll answer any questions, but that's basically where we are.
Let's, let's start with Larry.
Have any hope that tomorrow you'll have answers to the questions about the funding you worked there?
I have a feeling that, that we will have some answers tomorrow. But I also think that some answers will come directly to Mr. Moore after the meeting. I just have a feeling. Because it is the county's project. And yes, we're the recipient, but we're not driving the bus. So I just have a feeling that that's going to happen and we're not going to have all the information that we need tomorrow. I'm going in with a list of questions that I've asked each of our council members to write up so that we can have everything covered. But I don't think we're going to have all the information.
So you don't think that they're going to make a commitment tomorrow on funding?
I don't think so. And Jared and Mr. Moore might be able to address that as well, but the State Infrastructure Bank is not going to be there in the meeting. So, you know, we know that they pulled 420 million out of Charleston, right? So they did that like that, you know? So I, I don't know. I can't, I can't speak for that, so.
Mr. Moore?
I was just going to say, you know, what we're hoping to also get is a breakdown of the components.
Right.
To the mayor's point, if we look at the components and we figure out the CIB's not going to give us all of it, what can we fix? I think that's part of our goal here is to figure out.
That's correct.
What the components are. As was mentioned earlier, you know, the, the width of the bridge, the pedestrian, a lot of those things are going to fall off and we're just going to have to see what can be done.
Right.
So having attended both of your last two workshops.
And thanks for being there.
Yeah, you're welcome. I'm sorry I had to leave. We had a council meeting. But at the one the other day, Monday, your council members were pretty diverse.
Yes.
On what they wanted to see from this. One wanted bike paths. Another one said, no bike paths. We have to do this. So it was really pretty diverse from your council. I mean, we're, we're all concerned about the bridge and there were so many other things that came up. So I'm just wondering what your ballpark conglomeration is?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. And we don't have the parameters to work with that.
Yep.
So it's, it's still an open book. And, you know, the, the question is not what you don't want, but what do you want? You know, what is it that has to be there? You know, I think it would be great to have a, a bike path to connect to what the county's doing. But that may not be realistic at this time. So again, there's too many questions that we have on the table.
What was your, was there a consensus? One council member wanted a reversible lane?
Yep. No.
And I had to leave, okay.
No, I would say there was not consensus. And, and part of that, I think, comes down to, and it's going to be one of the questions tomorrow to DOT is to firmly state what they will and will not accept. You know, you know, people have talked about toll bridges. They've talked about reversible lanes. They've talked about X, Y, and Z. What is not on the table, right? And we need to understand that and that needs to be put in black and white from the DOT on their letterhead stating, this is not acceptable to us. We will not do it.
That would be very helpful to narrow down.
And that's, that's what we have to do because we've got to get council to a point where we're all speaking about the same parameters.
Correct. Well, thanks for inviting us to those meetings.
Absolutely.
Larry has one more and then I'll go to Tom.
I'll throw this out to, given the engineering staff and Sean, thanks, thanks for being here. Is it your impression that the bike path and a pedestrian path are, are important to people? And if so, would a reduction in the load limits on the bridge destined for destruction allow that concrete with a load restriction? allow that concrete with a load restriction, reduction, be available for that bike path and pedestrian path? Or does it have to come down? That's what I'm asking.
I'll let.
We'll defer to Jared on that one.
I think the first part isn't important, I think the mayor would probably say, yes, it's important. But, right now, with the cost that we've got from DOT is the bike path on the lane, on the bridge, as well as there's, there's a dock portion on the, on the Bluffton side, county side, is approximately 40 to 50 million dollars. So, when we're taking off bits and pieces, that's one thing. As far as the existing bridge, I don't believe the DOT wants to maintain the bridge in that condition regardless of the load. It's in very, very poor condition.
Okay.
Also, to that, the existing westbound lanes would be retained, but when you're going eastbound after you cross Pinckney Island, we still have to maintain access to Pinckney Island. So what's proposed in Senator Davis's letter is a bypass. So basically, the eastbound, don't touch down on Pinckney. And what's being considered by DOT, and hopefully we'll have some more information from them, is that access to and from Pinckney is from that remaining eastbound span.
Would that kick us into another environmental assessment?
That's going to be some DOT, they're going to have to give guidance. How much we modify the proposed plan today is, do we go start over, or can we just modify what we have? And those are answers that I don't know.
When you talk about Pinckney Island and a bypass, that, that raises.
Well, essentially, the, the new three-lane span in the proposed, from Senator Davis, is in the exact footprint of the proposed six-lane. So that all measures up. The difference is, in the existing environmental document, the entirety of the existing spans are demoed, which is a net positive for the project. So now we're losing that net positive as impacts, because we're not demoing that out. So, that would most likely need, it would fit in the environmental document, but just, it'd need to be modified.
Let's start down there and let everyone have a chance to say. Tom, go ahead.
Just have a basic question.
Questions, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, question is, with significant questions unanswered, these variables unknown, Mr. Moore, what are the parameters today that you want this workshop to run by? What do you expect us to accomplish?
Our main goal today was to bring you all, get a common understanding of where we've been, what the, where we are today, and where we are going forward. And to have any discussion regarding the proposal by Senator Davis, and to hear that from you all. We will have a discussion with DOT tomorrow with, with any of your comments in mind, and then obviously, we will come back with more information, and hopefully have more to provide in terms of what does DOT see as a viable path, as well as, I believe, is federal highway is going to be there as well? We're not sure if they're going to be there, but just what's, again, as we said before, what is DOT, what's acceptable to them? So then we come back to you all with more information, and perhaps an outline of how we would go and discuss with the CIB, because I think that will be our next step, is, is once we get the information, we'll need council direction, I think, really, to talk to the CIB about what's, what's an acceptable outcome with the CIB.
Well, my question is this, why wouldn't we have just Secretary Powell reach out to CIB and have them with you tomorrow?
Well.
I mean, with a March 31st deadline.
Yeah.
I think we're crashing the gates pretty quickly here.
We are. I think we've set it up to where we want to have the discussion with DOT, because we think, from a technical standpoint, we would need to be aligned with DOT prior to talking to the State Infrastructure Bank. Because I think, without knowing where DOT is, we, you know, part of it's going to be, how much is, what do we think the bridge is going to cost, right? Is that the key part of this whole project, getting the bridge repaired? Obviously, if we don't repair the bridge, there's a load limit, and that becomes a major issue for the town and the county.
For years, yeah.
So then it becomes a prioritization, what is the most, you know, if we only have X amount of dollars, what are the most important things? Again, we'll have a breakdown of these components to be able to tell you all what's the most important things. So.
York, do you have any comments or questions for?
Just, just to let you and the public know where I stand.
Absolutely, that's what we appreciate.
And, and I would tell you that, what I hear from Senator Davis is, we have, we have an issue with the bridges on Hilton Head. We're going to take care of the eastbound first, which is, I would consider phase one, completing that, and then at some future time, somebody else down the road will deal with phase two, which will be the westbound. So that's where I am right now. So, with that in mind, I am very much concerned about making sure that the town council is in agreement with that proposal. I believe that we should have the three lanes. I prefer the bike path, but if we don't have the funding for it, Senator Davis said that the bike path could be a part of phase two. And the only other concerns I have is for, I wrote it down somewhere, for access to Haypoint Landing, Windmill Harbor, lights, and the infrastructure there, Pinckney Island access, and Jenkins Island. Those are my concerns as we move forward with phase one, to make sure that those access and stuff are adhered to. That's my, as long as, as long as those things are in agreement, I can support this.
Okay.
On this effort.
Yes, and I would just say that we understand the westbound lane is probably 10 to 15 years out. And so, the westbound is not really, the eastbound is, is a critical point at this time. And in terms of the access to the islands, I don't know if you have any comments, we'll take that back, unless you have anything to add to that. But the island, the access to Pinckney, obviously, those are considerations as well. If it's, if it's one span, it's going to replace the two. There are issues that'll have to be addressed on that. So, thank you.
Joe?
Okay, where I stand, to repair the bridge, we've heard the number 50 million dollars. Seems like a waste of money, because it only buys us a few years, number one. And while you're repairing that bridge, you cannot use that bridge. Therefore, everything has to be put on the westbound lanes, east and west. That's an economic disaster. Point number two, to replace that bridge with a brand-new bridge that will have a life expectancy of 90 million, of 50 years, also seems like a waste of money, because to replace that bridge, you have to tear out that bridge, put a new bridge in, same thing. The westbound and eastbound lanes have to be just on the westbound side as we go forward. The logical is, we have X number of dollars to fix the eastbound section. The three questions I have that you need to have answered is, what is going to be the CIB commitment towards that project? That is essential, because they right now have 120 million dollars. If they're not going to give us 120 million, what are they going to give us? Which will lead to question number two, what can we build with the remaining money? And then question number three is, if we are going to build the eastbound lanes, that has to be in agreement, that the eastbound lanes will probably have to be dictated by federal highway and the state, because we're talking about a 50-year lifespan, which then requires us to probably have three lanes and a breakdown lane. So those are the essential things I think we're going to need to do.
Okay, and we're writing these questions down, so we'll take them with us tomorrow. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Any other questions?
I did have one more thing I needed to address. If, if there is a reduction in funding from the CIB, there is 80 million dollars that's there from the, from the 2018 referendum. Part of those funds have to be used on the island for the stony corridor. So that whole 80 million dollars is not there to go now to the bridge. So, what's left, if the bridge, if there's, if the CIB cuts, let's just say, cut it in half. So now you're 60 million. Now we take it from 200, 300 million to 240 million, but the cost is 250 million. Well, that 80 million that's there from the, from the tax referendum, part of it has got to be used in the stony area for improvements. So you don't have the full access of that 80 million dollars. Correct?
I'm not so sure.
But that's the way I understand it, but that's the way we're also looking at it, is that there is an improvement through, from the Moss Creek to Spanish Wells. And if we're now just talking about Mackey's Creek and Skull Creek, then we're not doing any good on the rest of the corridor. So, there's a lot more to the conversation.
Okay, so I have a comment, and I would like to research that, if that is true or not, if we have to use it at that.
We've done a lot of looking at it.
Okay. One thing, I went to the first meeting on January 9th, I heard your council. The, my district, and I know York's district, we have people who travel every day to Hilton Head to work.
Right.
I'm at a breeze, I see the buses coming back, you know, to Walmart, and to St. Helena, and Ladies Island, 8 o'clock at night. We need a bridge, we need a good bridge, we need a safe bridge for all of Beaufort County. But we also need cooperation, because we need the memorandum signed quickly, whenever we get to that point with the town of Hilton Head. And I know there, I heard a long laundry list of wants from your council. And I'm, I'm not saying that offensively, I understand it. I had a long list of wants when I was younger for things I wanted in a house, but I didn't get all those things. And I'm not, you know, this is just an analogy, but we got to live within our budget, and we don't have that extra money that we thought we were going to have. And I'm, I'm preaching to the choir, I know that, but I just want us all to keep in mind, this, this Hilton Head is very important, it's also very important to the workforce in Beaufort County.
Absolutely.
And other counties, Allendale.
Absolutely it is, and I'm glad you say that, because I'm here to work together, right, as we all are. I mean, we've got to turn this tide, and we've got to all be on the same page, and make certain that we're moving forward to protect our residents and guests.
Sure, good.
So, thank you.
I'll just wrap it up.
Okay.
Two things, one, I don't expect you to solve this problem tomorrow, but I just want you to lodge it in your head. This eastbound bridge is going to be south of the existing one. And I drive over that bridge as frequently as everybody else does. And I'm wondering what that's going to do to the parking lot for the ferry. So, I don't want you to bring it up, but I do want to start thinking about it, because that's, it's an important consideration.
And that has been part, I would just advocate, and Jared would say the same thing, this has been part of the design going forward. We already knew we were going to have to work through this, but yes.
I know you're thinking about it, but I don't know what you're going to, I don't think they'll bring it up tomorrow. And the final thing for me is, I am unalterably opposed to any recommendation that the traffic light at Windmill Harbor be removed, and I will not change that position.
I have one more thing.
Understood.
Duly noted.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm going to agree with Mr. McKellen about the light at Windmill Harbor, but the other thing is, one of your council members, Melinda, I think, raised a question about, is the 20 million for the water pipe in the proposal? Because that's a big hit, and so that needs to be something discussed.
The utility relocation? That's a question we can bring up tomorrow.
Yep, 20 million she estimated.
Yeah, I don't know if everybody knows what, what you're talking about, but the water, there is a water pipe, PSD1 operates, and if this bridge goes in, that water pipe has to be moved.
Has to be moved.
It's part of the utility relocation, yes.
That's 20 million dollars, it has to be moved.
Right.
I'd like to make one more comment. I remember many meetings that Mr. Garrigan came to, and they brought a busload of people about the light at Windmill Harbor one night. And I, I concur with Larry, that, that is absolutely needed to stay there for lots of reasons. Okay, we'll let you wrap it up, I guess, unless there's some other comments. This has been.
Okay, this has been helpful to hear your comments and questions, because we can take that, as Jared had mentioned, we can take that all with us tomorrow and have those addressed, we can come back. And once we get the information, we'll share it with you all, and then we'll, we'll work to determine what are the next steps. And obviously, we'll, the town will be there, and we'll work with the town on next steps.
Just a quick question, probably for Jared, I guess, as an engineer. If we're looking at one bridge eastbound, is that going to be one bridge or two bridges? One complete bridge?
It would be one complete bridge.
It's, the elevation is going to be high enough as, as you build it to not impact at all the traffic flow, accelerate, accelerate on, on the eastbound currently now.
Yes, so this kind of ties into Councilman McKellen's question. So, the way the six-lane bridge is proposed right now, or let me back up. The existing bridges, so everybody's under a same sheet of music, they come and then they meet at Pinky, and they, Pinckney, and they go down to the earth. So, they're independent bridges. The six-lane bridge, it comes down slightly, but it never touches ground. It stays as a bridge section across Pinckney Island. This is the engineering part that hasn't been designed yet, with the new three-lane bridge that Senator Davis is proposing. If that was to take place and the ferry operations remain active as it is, the bridge would stay elevated across Pinckney, but probably have to stay higher than it would in the six-lane version, so that trailers can go beneath it to get down to the boat landing and the ferry. So, so right now, we have, we have two humps. And in the future six-lane bridge, we still have two humps, but there's, there's not, it doesn't go as low on the dip. And then in this scenario, more than likely, to be engineered, it would probably stay higher throughout the entirety and come down on the ends. Sorry for my graphics.
Yeah, okay. Which probably would not take too much of the footprint on the landing on both ends.
Yeah, so the footprint would be designed, and we'd have to work with DOT and engineering on the spacing of each pillar so that we could route traffic, boat traffic and ferry traffic through that scenario.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there, are there any more comments, Mike, Moore?
I was just going to say, that concludes our, our presentation, barring any other comments from council or questions you'd like us to take tomorrow, if there's anything else.
Excellent presentation and excellent input. We really appreciate the public that came tonight, not tonight, it's not night yet, this afternoon.
Not yet.
Not yet. And we appreciate all the work that Hilton Head has done too with their workshops. All right, no other business?
Well, Mr. Moore, I suggested to the chairwoman, we don't have community services Monday. Since you're going tomorrow, can you do an update, I mean, time, the clock's ticking?
We could do a workshop, absolutely, or some kind of, we could schedule a workshop to come back and do an update.
So, could you be ready 2 o'clock Monday, and then we have.
I will look to Jared here.
Jared, you don't need to sleep this weekend, you're young.
I mean, we'll, we'll have information, come back and report. I don't know specifically what that report will be, but we can report and have an open dialogue. And, and if we do that, it continues the conversation in the open format. And so, regardless whether it's a 30-minute or a three-hour meeting, I think it could be a good use of time.
I think a short report back that we could do as a workshop.
That would be a great idea.
Yeah, it was clear at Hilton Head, get moving, and Mr., and we all just said, get moving. So if you get the information, Monday, we could take the next step.
We can give you an update, I think, for sure. Depending on what we get back and what we still need to learn, we can at least tell you that, too.
Yeah, since you can't come back without that money, you better bring your toothbrush.
Got it.
The money.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we are adjourned. Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you, guys.
Larry, you're not going to keep it to yourself, man?